On September 25th, I call this meeting of the Proctor Select Board to order. Would everyone please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, first, to review and approve the agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved, and now to review and approve the minutes of the September 11th regular Select Board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Okay, open public comment.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me again. I have a statement here I'd like to read and go over everything, and I'd like to make sure it has my language, so don't mind me reading from here. I've come here this evening in a final attempt to resolve the discrepancy in billing the water usage at 52 Main Street property. I would first like to confirm on the board EU's given at the last meeting. So here I have one EU for the Marble Museum bathroom. I have one EU for the tanks for the sprinkler system. I have one EU for the use of the bathroom by Mike Knowles, and then I have two EU's for the bathroom install used by Proctor Marble Co. Is that correct?
No. You say "used" by the bathroom, "used by bathroom," it's not, it's... It's... If you're a user of the Proctor water system, you get charged one EU. So it has nothing to do with the fact that, you know, it's a bathroom. It's just water is being used, so it's charged one EU.
I understand that the reason that I'm charged that EU is because one of my tenants is an industrial tenant that uses a bathroom. Correct.
Okay, yes. "Used" as a Proctor water system. And he uses that... Yes.
Yes. Okay. To confirm, this is a total of five EU's. We all agree on that? Okay. So now that I've verified the EU distribution, there are two parts of the decision made by the board that I would like to address. Firstly, the bathroom by Mike Knowles has been disconnected and will no longer be in use or accessible for future use. The toilet and the sink have been shut off, and the lock to the door has been changed. This will prevent any future use of the facility and cut all water consumption completely. This... There was a, I feel unprofessional, comment made at the last meeting regarding the lease issue. Regardless of this, moving forward, the Proctor Marble Co., represented by June and Brent Wilson here, who have agreed to this, will now be sharing a bathroom with Mr. Knowles moving forward. Allowing for this change should be made without any adjustments to the lease. The sharing of one facility under the decision handed down at the previous meeting would then reduce our EU's by one. Is that my understanding?
Well, so, two tenants would have use of Proctor water.
A sim... One single bathroom, which a board would be charged for.
So two tenants would have access to it.
Correct.
That would be two equivalent users, wouldn't it, Albert?
Yes. Let me... Let's just go back to the...
I was told last time that if multiple tenants had shared that bathroom, myself included, that that would be one EU.
Let's go back to the rules and regulations.
Okay.
Page one.
So was that...
General provisions.
Understanding on the explanation of...
That could... That very well could have been.
Okay. Because when I brought that up last time, that was not the conversation that was had.
In that, further reviewing, you know, this ordinance, it says, "Under Article 1, Page 1, General Provisions, Section 5, all existing properties of customers, property owners, ratepayers, and users of the Proctor water system are required to remain connected to the water, Proctor water system." You know, so Mike Knowles was connected, so he has to stay connected. You can't just all of a sudden say, "I'm disconnecting him." It's just like the homeowner says, "Proctor Water Board, I'm going to disconnect from your system. I'm going to put in my own well." And that's not permitted by this ordinance.
My understanding, that ordinance says to disconnect. My building is still connected, and all the other systems are still connected, so I'm not disconnecting from the water system. I'm disconnecting a bathroom within my own building, still leaving the rest of the water system flowing, under that ordinance.
Can I?
With both tenants having access to the water. I mean, this is similar to, if I owned a duplex and I didn't rent it out for six months, I can't just not pay my water for that, for the second apartment for six months. It's... The access is there, it's available.
But it's not available, and it's not accessible.
It is. You... Mike has access... You just said Mike has access to a bathroom that he shares.
The same bathroom that two tenants share in one bathroom.
So that's a tenant who has access to Proctor water. Under our definition, that's an equivalent user.
Can I ask a question?
Hmm?
If Mike worked for us, what would that be?
I'm really not sure, but the point is, we've already gone through and eliminated five equivalent users.
So let me continue.
No, I'm sorry, let me continue, please.
Okay.
We've already done this, we've moved it to five equivalent users based on our ordinance. We've already budgeted for 10, we still moved it to five,
Okay.
and we've given you a very lengthy rationale as to why that was done.
Yeah.
So, go ahead and continue, but...
Okay.
Could I... Could I just say something?
Sorry, go ahead.
Um, when I was manager at the Vermont Marble Museum, I used to fight the same thing. Because I would fight the town saying, "We have 10 bathrooms, two weren't even usable." But I was always told, "You are... It's a comp... It's a... On... It's by the toilets you have, how many toilets you have."
Yep.
We had 10 toilets, whether they work or not, you have them, and that's what you're billed for, and there was no ifs, ands, or buts about it. But having said that, doesn't mean that I agree with that. I think, I think what needs to be done, I think this, this whole ordinance, this whole project needs to be looked at and updated accordingly.
Understood.
But, so I can, I can feel your pain to a point, but at least you got it knocked down to five. I didn't get it knocked down any.
I understand. So I'll come up...
Based on what you're saying, do you count the bathroom that's in the mill, which has, I don't know, probably a dozen urinals and several toilets, is that still counted?
In the mill? You mean...
In the mill, in the mill section.
It's one of the bathrooms in there that is not connected to water whatsoever.
Is that chems?
It used to be.
Yeah, in the...
The chems part?
Okay, no, that wasn't, but that wasn't part of the...
No, you're not counting, you...
No.
What you're talking about is the number of toilets.
Yeah, but that wasn't the pres... That wasn't the preservation trust.
We won't worry about that. I won't worry about that. So I'll continue. So, before moving to my second point, I'd like to say that I did not appreciate the comments made during the previous meetings. On the EU rating of 10, that was to give it a down initially and ETV previously. Statement was made under the current rules that could be seen how the water rating of 10 could have been reached, then calling into question my credibility and honesty. It has come to my attention that I was subsequently slandered on a Citizenmade Proctor Town Facebook page following one of these meetings. Specifically by someone that works for the town in this room currently. It is disappointing that someone who works within the town as part of the inner workings would make such remarks, personal or otherwise. These comments are highly unprofessional and can easily be interpreted as representing the opinions of the government body. It is my understanding that these disputes are made in good faith, and I would hope that personal feelings are not part of these decisions. I am here as a lifelong homeowner. I grew up in Barham, Vermont, a town much like this. I've worked with the town of St. John's Bay as well as the town of Proctor, creating new life in the two separate areas. In desperate need. I come from a lower-class middle, lower-middle-class family. As many homeowners do, I do not drive an expensive car, drive no one Honda for the gas mileage. I live with my parents, as I put my money where my mouth is and spend every dollar to ensure that I live up to commitments I have made to do what I say I have done, or in will do. I say this because I am not here as a large developer trying to pull one over on the town. I'm a small-town man seeking to be the change that I want to see around me. I cannot afford to pay more than my fair share of these products as my business is undertaking extensive and costly fees to make these things happen. It is in the best interest of these products that I stand before you now. With that said, the second part that I would like to discuss on the water distribution is the sprinkler system that had two tanks that serviced it. These tanks account for one EU per year investigation. Now, it's my understanding that the purpose of the visit to my building was to ensure that the operations were properly accounted for, and that the time between that investigation and the next meeting would be spent researching all of these parts to ensure that a fair and just ruling was given. What I found during the last meeting was that that time had been spent up doing a comprehensive review so much I'd have been used to ensure that we would be kept at the rate given offhand prior to any real investigation. As you said, a 50% decrease from a rate of 10, which everyone here agreed to was a fair assessment. Following this previous meeting, I did some research of my own, and what I found was very unsettling. During the course of my digging, I found that our sprinkler system is not in fact connected to public water distribution system in any way. These tanks fall underneath Article 2, Section 4 of the town's water rules and regulations, the definition of a building connection line, or Article 2, Section 42, the definition for service connection. I point these two out specifically because they are the two main water distribution articles within the ordinance. These tanks are emptied and filled via mutual agreement with the fire department by the department's trust as a training exercise for the department. I've confirmed this fact with the fire department, as well as the previous owners. Under Article 2, Section 54 of the ordinance, utility, it is stated that water supply system means a publicly-owned water system operated as a public utility under a valid state permit to supply water for domestic purposes. As the fire department is clearly not a water system operated as a public utility, subsequently, these tanks are clear, clearly not covered by the ordinance. In addition, it was brought to my attention that there is in fact no service line in the building capable of handling the required volume to fill these tanks whatsoever. Now, these facts were not known to me as the new owner of the building, as they are highly irregular. But these facts had been discussed with town officials. A new line to fill the tanks would have required a significant amount of construction, including digging up rail lines. The knowledge of this discussion was provided via a town official who made it clear that this was relatively public knowledge, meaning this board knew and withheld that information. Furthermore, this fact brings into question not only the current EU rate, but the prior EU rate as well. When it is stated that it could be seen how a rate of 10 was reached in the prior meeting, these tanks were used as part of that justification. This then calls into question the associated fees being collected on both accounts. It was through the public system. It can be deduced that the town, that it can then be deduced that the town knew this information and illegally charged for water, not distributed through the public system, does not follow under the guidelines, and plan to continue to be a legal taxation upon me and my business. In addition, I have here copies of my tenant rolls from the previous owner, VPTV. As you'll see here. These go from 2021 to 2022, with a total of eight tenants, with five of these tenants being listed as storage tenants only. As stated in the previous meeting, tenants that are storage-only do not meet and are not considered part of the EU calculation, meaning that a total of three tenants would have access to the water. No bathrooms were added during this time or removed, meaning the total access points that have been consistent from 2021 up to the inspection a few weeks ago. These three tenants in question consist of VMM, Proctor Marble, and Mike Knowles. Given that these three are current tenants, we know what their general consumption is, with Mike Knowles being given one EU, Proctor Marble Co. being given additional two. It would have taken 220 visitors per day on average at 15 gallons per visitor to reach seven EU's for a total of 10 via Vermont Marble Museum. Now, I only mention this as COVID started in January of 2020, and the museum was closed for all of these times, 2021 and 2022. So while VMM would have still been part of this rate, it would only account for one EU, as the bathrooms would have still been open, but they were not charging for customers, understanding what we have discussed about use. This would bring the total to four. I was told that the rate stretched by PTV. This would mean that they were also aware of the discrepancy. Further reinforcing my previous statement, which was ultimately dismissed, of the mathematical impossibility of reaching 10 EU's and the town knowingly and illegally collecting excess revenue on the property that they are otherwise legally entitled to. To this point, I have made multiple attempts to rectify this situation diplomatically, all of which have been categorically dismissed, not given serious attention the board is legally required to give. I have now given irrefutable evidence to back my claims and demand that it counts and give an appropriate accounting of my water rate. In addition, I expect a thorough explanation for exactly why this system was used to attempt to extract fees on water, which it was legally not able to. It is clear that the system for determining water rates is flawed. It is not, however, my job to fix the system. It is, however, my job to ensure that my company is paying its fair share and nothing more. Viewers' board did not appropriately allocate fees based on the facts and figures provided, and unfortunately, we will have to take the same route of having a judge determine who is correct based on merits. Moreover, it is my understanding that this board has also been legally challenged previously on the rate schedule, and has not been successful in defending those challenges. It is clear thereby that this more is more of an institutional problem. As a result, if that is the route that is to be taken, we will also be filing formal complaints for the state and federal civil rights violations with the state attorney general and the inspector general, as well as the federal attorney's office for the state of Vermont, and request an investigation into the practices. I sincerely hope we do not need to progress to this point. However, we have exhausted all other means ensuring that we are taxed fairly. Thank you.
After hearing this, I think we should put this on hold and talk to our lawyer before we proceed any... You know, being threatened with a lawsuit here, we're...
I very clearly am not threatening with a lawsuit, Tom, to...
Well, that's what I heard. So, we are going to move on. Thank you, and we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at this, and we'll respond when we can.
So just to be clear, and I will draw this matter as you have requested, it was my understanding that the investigation was done a deep dive into what exactly was going on, and that was the time that was supposed to be taken. Why was that not done, and why were these things that were relatively public knowledge, especially within the town's workings, something that were brought up during that investigation as it was the whole point to find out exactly what the water use was in the building?
So, what I'm going to say is, we did do a deep dive, we did explain very thoroughly. I think I'll spend about 45 minutes explaining the rationale, and that's as far as I'm willing to comment at this point, because at this point, we'll need to take a look at everything. So, thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on. Small Business Association.
I like a question.
Oh, I'm sure, sure.
I mean, aside from Travis, that I'm not speaking in any way for Travis, but I heard that we were rated as a two, and that part of that rationale was that supposedly we use water to saws eight hours a day, which is totally untrue and ridiculous, first off. I mean, anybody that's come into our business, if we were using the saws eight hours a day, my electric bill would not be $125, $112, whatever, a month, because our saws have, what, four motors, three motors?
Twenty motors.
So I feel like we are being used too to justify whatever. And I know from years back, as Linda can attestify, that Ann Hubbard, all of them have fought this before. But I will tell you, we are not using what supposedly came up with. And you, I guess, sir, came to our business, and my husband told you what we use, and apparently you didn't find him credible, which to me is an insult.
Okay, hold on, hold on.
No, no, I'm not going to hold on, because every time I've come to one of these meetings, you are not just all-powerful. I am a citizen here, I am a person that has been in business 30-something years. We fought the electric company and benefited the town because of that. But I'm not going to hold on, I'm going to tell you. If you cannot believe us about how much we use, then you need to come for a tour to our shop, and we can have witnesses come in. I'm not talking about anything legal. I'm just saying that we have a good reputation, we are honest, but I am not going to be used as a justification. And my husband can attest to that. I brought my electric bills over, I don't know what your electric bills, but if you think a company is running a saw eight hours a day, pays $125 in electric a month, or $112 electric in a month, then you need to go talk to Green Mountain Power.
No, that, that eight hours a day was per week, that was eight hours a week.
We don't even use it that much.
Well...
I mean, you were told that a hose that dribbles out water for his hand oil is a hose like we're spraying water all over.
Yeah, the saw wasn't running, so I couldn't see it in operation to see the volume of water that was being used. I tried to get the nameplate material or nameplate information, the, the model number, the make, and all I could get was, "It's just a lane." The manufacturer is no longer in business, and it's Vermont-made. I wanted to try and research to see, you know, what the specs are, because it would say, you know, what the volume of water that is needed to run the saw, and I couldn't get any of that information.
You're not going to get that information.
And that's what I got at that meeting. The lady was saying that I didn't believe what you said. And see, that's just what he told me, I can't get that information. Well, I have to get some information.
Do I have my electric bills?
What's that going to do with water volume?
Because that shows you how long you use the saw for, because you have to have electricity to run.
Yeah, I don't know what the, uh, what did usage is for the electric motor, so...
Have I loaded?
So again, it's...
Four electric motors on the saw. If I were to use the saw a lot, the electric bill would show that. While I'm using the saw, you can't cut dry, you have to use water. It's, has to be there.
Yes.
What we're talking about with the electric bill is that it actually proves the saw's not being used that much, so therefore, the water's not being used that much.
Makes logic sense.
You're not going to get any saw company on the planet to tell you how much water a saw uses, because it's not like electricity. The way the water is used is with a, with a ball valve that is done by myself as I watch it cut. Some cuts need more water, some cuts need less water. It's not something that is run through a computer with the saw.
Without, without meters.
To say, okay, if the saw's on, you got X amount of water being used.
Without water meters, we give it our best estimated calculations.
I'm going to come to this.
Just like it's $70 for a water...
If you want to sit here and theorize about how much water is used, then that's like going to a philosophy class, when you can put a meter on it and you can measure the water. I'm going to bring up the example of, what is the difference between this chair and that wall? And I can ask everybody in this room their opinion of what that distance might be, and everybody will probably have a different opinion. But I will say, why don't we take a tape measure out and measure that distance? Then we know, we're not just hypothetically coming up with what's being used. We know. Now, I don't know what the water meter situation is, why it's relevant to do that. If you want to understand how much water is being used, just really simple, put a water meter on it.
Yeah.
Then you know, it's a number.
Can I ask another question? Who's a number two otherwise in town? So we know what's... Like, is high school a number two, is...
High school's more than a two.
Yes.
So is the elementary school.
Yes.
And they should be. Is...
That's a number two?
More than.
They're more than two equivalent.
Six, four, five.
And they essentially set vacant for about two and a half months for one school, so... I mean, we all pay based on capacity. That's how the system is set up, it's paid based on capacity. My question is, is the challenge only for the current year, or is the challenge being made for last year also?
I've made my current statements, they have made their current statements, I believe the matter was closed on my end.
I don't think that's ever been addressed here, that if he's challenging the current year or, or last year also. So, and I'm not sure that there's any privilege to that. As water users, all of us pay, that, and just like the five EEUs that have now been deducted from him, that he came in after the budget was set, even though he has been a property owner in this town prior to that and did not come in with a quest, now will filter down to all of us as property owners in this town. So I'll ask again, is it being challenged for both? Because it has never been stated in any of these discussions whether he is current, challenging both, or delinquent. And there is no privilege there, because you have discussed that with many, many residents here in this town and shared when residents were being disconnected.
So Lisa, are you asking if they're delinquent currently?
Yes.
Okay.
And I believe the dispute is on both, since you've owned the property. I believe the dispute is challenging both years. Not just current, but past, and the accounts are delinquent.
And is there an agreement in place if the account is delinquent from the prior year?
There was no agreement made.
Then my follow-up questions would be, why do they still have water on that property? When I said there at the last meeting, and people that were delinquent had received shut-off notices and had to come in and pay their bill a full, and apparently that's not happening. So why is this one person, this one business owner in this town being treated differently?
And I believe that was an agreement, I don't know if you had an agreement with the prior town manager or not, but that was before me when it started.
Yeah.
And I think it was...
As I mentioned in the previous meeting, and was dismissed, that there had been an agreement between PTV and the town. I was told that did not exist. I can't say more than that.
PTV doesn't own the property, so that's irrelevant. Whoever the current property owner is, the one, just as you've said here and said numerous times about people that are renters in properties where, where accounts are delinquent, it is the responsibility of the property owner. You can't rely on the renter, and you can't go back and say someone else, a prior property owner, had an agreement. That's ridiculous, that's absurd. So either they are current, or they are delinquent for both years. And if they are delinquent and they do not have an agreement in place, it is ridiculous, it is disrespectful to every property owner that resides in this town that they're still receiving water. Because if I was delinquent and did not have an agreement in place, you would have the town up there shutting off my water, just like it was discussed in this prior meeting, at a prior meeting about property owners that had to do that, and had to come in and pay their bills or make an agreement. Does he have an agreement in place?
Not that I'm aware of.
He has, he has a question in place, and usually when you are appealing something, there is usually a procedure.
Being that he's appealing, being that he's appealing what the, what the criteria to base this monetary amount that he's delinquent on.
No.
So, I'm going to say that we're going to move on at this point. We entertained the appeal, we reduced it by five equivalent users. There have been some things brought up tonight that we're going to have to consider. As the town manager said, they're not currently under an agreement, and we'll certainly take all this into consideration, but we are going to move on.
Are you glad that he's in the town, that we're still running the business?
We're going to move on at this point.
No, no, I'm asking you a question personally. Are you glad that we are still in business? Us, after 30 years, the town, Proctor, and Mortimer Proctor fund paying for the library and other things in this town.
I'm not paying for the library, June, let's not, let's not go off on some tangent here.
Hey, you know what? You always think...
Hey, hey, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call order on this one.
She does it every time, you guys let her.
The discussion, the discussion is over.
You do a, you do a census out there, a...
Small Business Association.
And you're going to say that she believes people. She does.
Ma'am, please.
No, I'm not doing it.
Do it, do it, stop.
Goodbye.
Small Business Association.
You know, next time you have something donated to the library, forget it.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Okay, good evening. My name is Mike Miles, I'm a public affairs specialist with the U.S. Small Business Administration. And I'm here because the U.S. Small Business Administration wants to make sure that everyone in Rutland, Cali is aware that if they were affected by the storms and floods that occurred back in July of this year, as a result of the disaster that was declared, they can apply to the U.S. Small Business Administration for a disaster loan. That includes homeowners, renters, businesses, large and small, and nonprofit organizations as well in the county of Rutland. With respect to the low disaster loans that the home, the U.S. Small Business Administration is able to provide with respect to homeowners and people who rent their homes, the SBA can provide loans for their personal property that may have been damaged or destroyed. that may have been damaged or destroyed um as a result of the disaster for up to forty thousand dollars. And the uh personal property uh would include such things as an automobile, their clothing, furniture, appliances, things of that nature at their home. With respect to the homeowner, uh they can also apply for a disaster loan with respect to their real estate um that was damaged or destroyed as a result of the floods um that occurred. And uh that could include um of course rebuilding or repairing um the, uh the building itself, something that happens in the yard, things of that nature as, as well. And that's up to two hundred thousand dollars. Uh with respect to the businesses and the nonprofits um in the area, and these are for the private uh nonprofit uh organizations, the maximum uh loan is two million dollars, and that's for everything. And that could include, of course, the business or nonprofit's real estate, um its uh properties such as, again, equipment, supplies, um of vehi- vehicles, uh materials, tools, things of that nature. Um also, the SBA has uh what's uh where you can apply for a mitigation loan. And um with respect to a homeowner who wanted to apply for a mitigation loan to try to build back better, um perhaps install a sump pump, a French drain, a retaining wall, something of that nature in, in the event that another disaster occurred, that hopefully their property wouldn't be damaged again. And with respect to a homeowner, they can um apply for a disaster loan up to twenty percent of the verified property damage. So whatever that property damage is for their home and their other property, they can apply for uh a mitigation loan up to twenty percent of that amount. So that would be added to those other two amounts. You know, the two hundred thousand dollars if it came all the way to that, or the forty thousand, so then they could try to get up, up to twenty percent of whatever is considered um a verified uh property damage loan. And then with respect to a business, a business can also apply for a mitigation loan as well. And that would just be included in the total figure of two, up to two million dollars. Under some circumstances, a homeowner or a business can also um seek to refi, refinance a loan that's already existing on the property. Uh but that's something that the SBA, you know, looks at pretty much on a case-by-case basis as to whether or not that was inappropriate. Uh with respect to the loans, um the um, there is no interest accrues for the period, first year of the loan. So it's, it's interest-free for one year. The first payment is not due for a period of one year as well. So it's one year from the date that you, uh that the person or the business or the nonprofit receives their uh first um draw on the loan. Um and the interest rates are low. Uh for nonprofits, it's two point three seven five percent. For homeowners, it's two point five percent, and for businesses, it's four percent. Somebody with excellent credit, sometimes they can get a higher interest rate. Uh but generally, those, those are the rates. And usually the payoff period for the loan is usually thirty years. Um again, if the person has extremely um good credit and could really get a loan on the open market, sometimes their payoff period can be as low as seven years. But it depends upon what the applicant would be able to, to handle. Uh in addition, the SBA um uh strives to uh give the applicant a decision as to their loan application within about two to three weeks after they've submitted all the documents. And quite often, people don't submit all the documents um in a timely manner. So that is usually the um reason why there's some type of delay. And then as well, the um uh SBA um sometime, if the loan is more than twenty-five thousand dollars, the SBA will ask for collateral. Um if the person doesn't have any collateral, however, that doesn't mean that they can't get a loan, but we do ask um for collateral once the loan exceeds twenty-five thousand dollars. Um with respect to the um, uh once the person, um and of course, there's no application fee for the loan as well. Um and the person is not required to accept the loan once they apply for it. They can always, they know, they can ask for less. Um if they want more, they can ask for more as well and see if the agency provides them with any, any additional funds. But once they um assign the loan documents, the SBA typically releases the first um draw on the, the loan um within five days, five business days. That's our, that's our goal as well. Uh so um the agency just wants to make sure that, um again, the residents in all the counties that were affected by the disaster and that were declared um a disaster as a result of the floods and everything are aware of this loan program. Uh the deadline to apply with respect to a property um loan is October twelfth of this year. Now, there's, there's another type of loan that we also have. This one is for businesses and for nonprofits only, and that's called an economic injury loan. And that's where it doesn't, the business or the nonprofit doesn't have to have sustained any kind of uh physical damage to any of their property. However, if they've noticed that since the disaster occurred, their revenue has decreased, their people making um purchases have decreased, or they had to close the business because there were some road closures, the electricity went out, um their customers, their workers, their suppliers, somebody wasn't able to get uh to their business or wasn't able to get supplies to their business. And then that resulted in them having a reduction in income, people canceling contracts with them, things of that nature. They can apply for what's called an economic injury disaster loan. Again, with respect to businesses and nonprofits, it's a maximum of that, um up to two million dollars um for that. Um you know, again, in, in the other funds they, they might apply for, uh for a loan for as well. Uh so, uh and, and again, the interest rate for the business um is uh four percent, and the nonprofit, two point three seven five percent. And the deadline, though, for an economic injury loan is not until April fifteenth, uh twenty twenty-four. And the SBA um tells businesses that uh they should just kind of monitor their, you know, banking statements, what's happening over a period of time, because an economic law, uh law, sometimes it takes a few months uh before that can be recognized. And so that's why it has a much longer term extension period.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it, too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other open public comment?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Yes, I'll, I'll bring it up again. Sunday, this is a Sunday, this Sunday. Why is the town pickup in Pittsburgh?
Because they went to pick up some window washers to be a little. Yeah, that's the reason, John. They work on weekends, and so they went to Pittsburgh to pick it up.
That's how I agree with you.
Okay, don't.
That's, that's all but a taxer, it should not be used for personal use.
You've been.
I'm not the only person that saw.
Okay.
All right? And that's why I'm bringing it up. I've had enough. You got one pickup down there, it's destroyed because you let it use it for personal use. Now you're letting this one be used.
It wasn't for personal.
And I understand. Ben, let me finish.
No, hold on, John. I'm answering, John, hold on. I'm answering your question. We're telling you it's not being used for personal use. You can disagree, but that's the answer.
It seems like it spends a lot of time in Pittsburgh on Saturday and Sundays.
Anything else?
Well, I'm just curious.
We, we just gave you the answer, John.
I'm honest, that's the last to the taxpayers.
John, we just gave you the answer. So is there anything else?
Well, we've been looking at different things, and I'm seeing a lot of things I don't like to see.
Okay, is there anything else, John?
And I wish the town flood guard would stop, stop some of this stuff.
Anything else?
Well, I'd like to see the trimming down when you use them all. That'd be nice. That has never been done on a Sunday.
Did you see the signs repair, John?
The law?
The sign that you asked to have repaired, it's repaired.
What, what sign is this?
The one by LaFons.
The corner of Holden and South Street.
It only got repaired after, after four months.
Well, it would be nice if you came to a meeting once in a while and said that.
I haven't seen it, so I haven't seen it.
Okay, you noticed it wasn't fixed right, and now they fixed it, so.
It's been fixed for about a week now, I think.
Yes.
Well, I haven't seen it. It's unusual.
Take a drive around, you'll see it. The other open public comment.
Leona?
Leona?
I have a comment, but it's not because I'm bad about it. I mean, it's like, everybody's in a bad mood tonight.
Is that your observation?
Now you're here and we're not, so. Okay.
Wow, you're earning your money, don't I?
Moving on, uh review the bills and expenditures and sign the orders. Has everybody had a chance to sign the orders?
Yes.
Yeah. Next up, new plow truck, uh new plow for town truck, three quotes, choosing a vendor for the snowplow.
So I think I raised it once before. The guys were saying the, the plow that they have now is kind of like band-aided together, and they've done makeshift stuff over the last year or two to make it, you know, operable, and so snow doesn't go on the truck, and all these little pieces. And it's just wearing down and from just scraping and hitting, you know, things. It's just, it's not gonna last through the year. So um Kyle went out and got three quotes um from different people for a new plow. So I said I would bring it to your attention, and we could talk about it and hopefully choose a vendor to go to.
So it looks like the three quotes are Warner's is ten thousand eight hundred and forty-six, Earl's is ten thousand and sixty, and if it's pronounced Trius, Trius is nine thousand six hundred and thirty-five. Any discussion?
On the Trius, you know, the curb guard kit? It was listed on the other two businesses, but it wasn't listed with Trius. And I didn't know if that was something that Kyle wanted. I didn't see it when I went through that listing. You know, because I know with Earl's, he asked for, you know, the snow deflector to be added to his quote. And I see the first two quotes had a curb guard kit, but I didn't see it with Trius. So I just wondered if that was something, because he said in that uh memo that he was looking for the third quote or still hadn't received the third quote. And I wonder if it was Trius, and he just didn't see or didn't have an opportunity to get back to them and say, you didn't include a curb guard kit.
Yeah, I don't know. Um. I didn't know if they put it, included it in something else, you know, like.
Yes, that's what I was wondering.
Right.
Yeah. You know, and it was a line item in the other two things, but it wasn't mentioned in the Trius one. So I didn't know if that is something he wanted and.
I mean, I can ask him um if that's something he wanted and it wasn't included, because I'm sure if it wasn't and it's added in, it's gonna bump the price up.
Yes.
So I don't know if we should have a motion to, oh, do you have a question?
No. Um, if we go with the two in New York State, that means we've gotta have a man and for four or five hours to drive it over and get this installed. So it's actually gonna increase the price.
Right.
Yeah, because Trius.
Of our cost, actually, you know, if we're gonna have four or five hours for one of our employees to do it.
That's true, and Earl's is local, so anything, and they work on our equipment already, so it would be easier if something did happen that they're right here.
And it's only four hundred dollars more.
Right.
Yeah.
And it has everything.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we go with Earl's.
I second that.
Motion's been made in the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion. You don't have to vote anymore. Motion passes. Well, Peg TV will have a blooper reel for this one. Moving on to Dump Day, October seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so Dump Day is out there. We, um I have it on the website. Um, I will, um, you know, kind of flash it out there more. I've given the little tickets to the clerk's office to hand out to people. Um, we did make some revisions from the last time that when we met. We had talked about the five dollars for ticket and then um twenty dollars for the load afterwards. And after emailing everybody, kind of getting consensus, because I talked to um some of the guys from Public Works, and they said that a lot of people like consistency. So if last time there was no charge and then it was twenty dollars, and also now we are charging, and then the hours changed, it's just gonna mess everybody up. So we stayed with the nine to one. Um, your first load's free, second load's twenty dollars, but you still need the ticket to show that you are here. Um hazardous waste will be there from eleven to one. And they um gave me a form, which I also include in your packets, and I've included it downstairs in the clerk's office. So when someone comes up to get their permit, they can grab this if they have hazardous waste, because they can fill it out ahead of time. Because the guys from Solid Waste, it takes a lot, it slows up the line if people are sitting there, because they document everything. They put your name, your address, they want every information about you. So we've included those. And then I have four dumpsters um ordered from Casella. And they're bringing them Friday, and they'll pick them up Monday.
And they're thirty-yard dumpsters.
Yeah, that was the biggest they had.
Yeah, right, yeah.
On the wooden brush, if, if, say you cut down a number of trees and you have lobs, is that included under wooden brush?
I think so. I think anything like cleanup and any kind of rough timber. So, I mean, you don't want like sixty-foot pine trees probably back down there.
How about anything with a gasoline engine? Lawnmower, snow blowers? We don't take any of that stuff?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
I don't think so.
I was just looking here, you know, on the listing, and I'm thinking, if somebody's gonna show up with a snow blower, a lawnmower, and then.
Right.
They're gonna put it on the side and then.
And that's what happened, that's why I was kind of wishing um the hazardous waste could be there the time we are, because what happened last year is people would come with their hazardous waste, and they said that they're not here yet, and they would just leave it there. And we don't want them doing that.
Right.
So, I'm gonna try to emphasize that when we put it out there again, that, you know, you have to wait for them.
Any other questions about Dump Day?
No.
Okay, um pricing for salt.
So I went out and got quotes from three salt companies, and I was actually surprised, because when I first, um, Appalachia contacted me and said that they probably would be higher, just because their salt is very well maintained and contained. It's inside, it's dried, it's accessible. They actually came in at the lowest. And so Kyle was thrilled, because they have really good salt. It works really well, it's dry, when they get it, they deliver it. And they're very personable, they call you the minute you email them on anything. They're very, very personable, and it's, it's kind of nice to have that connection. So I'm just looking for approval on Appalachia.
So moved.
Motion's been seconded. All those in favor of approving Appalachia, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Uh fuel bids. Fuel bid.
We only got one bid.
So they're both from Champlain Valley. The first I'm opening up is diesel bid. And they are giving us a price of rack placed, rack plus ten cents per gallon. Rack is currently at three forty-two thirty-five. And so the September first price would be three fifty-two thirty-five, plus taxes. And so that's the diesel. Are we taxed?
We're not supposed to be, we're not supposed to tax that anything.
Well, it says applicable, so.
Where, that's.
Yeah.
Their form.
Yeah.
And then, uh for Champlain Valley fuels, for heating oil, number two heating oil, is um rack plus, well, they gave us both, they gave us a fixed price of three thirty-eight. And then rack plus ten cents, which currently would be three thirty-five seven. I guess the question would be whether we wanna go with the fixed price of three thirty-eight or do rack plus ten cents.
So we jumped to three forty-five, you're saying?
Three, uh, sorry, the rack rate is three twenty-five, plus ten cents, would be three thirty-five point seven. That's only three cents difference. Uh the way things are going, uh I think the fixed price would be. I would agree with that. Better. So the fixed price would be three thirty-eight per gallon. Which is a good price. Anybody else? And that's all we got, so the one bid for heating oil and one for diesel.
I believe they've been.
I think they.
They've been there for quite a few years, yeah.
Yeah, just surprising we didn't get.
Any other bids?
Yeah, we sent it for three others.
Yeah.
We are, we're a small camp.
That tells me the price is going up and they don't want to.
Did Marcel bid on it? No.
No.
I don't think he ever has.
No, Gitcher has bid before, Kewser Energy has bid before. Champlain has bid before.
But you don't have the revenue balance, or how would you get to the twelve hundred? Oh, I thought I was going to, you don't have to.
I don't know the total of this past year. I know I did ask.
It's not, it's not much more than that.
Yeah, it's like that, so that's pretty small.
Little fire station, that's.
The rake.
So we're planning, yeah. It's probably more than twelve hundred, but yeah, whatever.
Yeah.
It's not big enough. You're absolutely right.
So is there a motion to accept the bids from Champlain Valley for the fixed price for number two heating oil? And the rack plus ten for diesel? So.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, submitted reimbursement for class two.
I paid more than that for fuel oil the other day.
Submitted reimbursement for class two highway grants.
I just completed that reimbursement, so we should be getting that money back. And then I was going to speak to this in my manager's report, but the balance that Michael's, sixty-five thousand dollars that would come from the state, that actually doesn't go back to get reimbursed. What it does is that's the money allocated to us. So it's already coming in quarterly. So what we'll do is just transfer the money from that account that that sits in and put it over into this, so.
Any questions on that? Short-term rentals.
So this was raised once before and then someone else mentioned that to just put it onto the agenda today for a conversation. I did mention that there is a roundtable discussion on it tomorrow at the town fair, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. So it's a discussion that can have by anybody, any questions, to kind of boundaries and, you know, what our options are. So I'm definitely going to try to make that one, just to get some more information. I did pull off some agreements that were from Rotland Town, Woodstock. And theirs are very different. It sounds like Rotland Town started going, yeah, we don't want this. And they eventually just kind of go, well, let's just find them. And that becomes another layer of problems, I think, down the road unless, you know. I think what we're finding now is people aren't registering when they're doing Airbnb, Airbnb. And how do you get that on books? Woodstock is much more stringent and limits it even to like five weeks a year that you can rent your place. And it has to be your primary residence. The only time you don't have to limit the number of days is sort of full heat season.
Well, of course.
So, but yeah, and so, and a lot of them, Rotland Town didn't do this, but I have Burlington did. And it was another town, I think, that you have to have your primary residence in order to rent your room out.
I live in a residential neighborhood and to have a business go in right next door to me would not be what I want. Not what I'm bargaining for.
I think it would be interesting to see what they, they talk about at the town.
See what the discussion is.
Well, and it was, it was this article, somebody, I think it's Burlington, or some other state. And they, they bought a place thinking this is what they want to do, Airbnb. And then once they did it, and then other people start coming in, now they realize what a, it's not a good idea. Like they're not in favor of it. It's just ruined the makeup of neighborhoods and stuff like that, so. And it's just kind of limited housing for people who live in the state and work in the state and want housing, whether Toronto property, year-round, or purchase a house, so.
It's definitely a problem in this area.
So I'll let you know when I find out from that.
Anything else on short-term rentals? Regional Board of Commissioners.
So Michael was the regular commissioner on this and it's not any longer because he's not here. So they reached out to me and I said I would be happy to be on it. We have an alternate commissioner who is Carrie Covey. So they gave me a form to fill out that this has to be signed by you to allow me to be on it. And whether or not Carrie continues or somebody else is nominated, so. So I'm just going to.
Any discussion about that?
There is a meeting Wednesday, but I probably can't make it because I'm at the league, so. But I think Carrie's client told her to go, or asked her if she could go. Anybody else have any interest?
I think Judy making excellent representative. Have we comfortable with Carrie continuing to be alternate? Unless someone on the board would rather.
Is that Carrie that we?
Yeah.
Carrie Covey, yes.
I'm glad you didn't bring that up while he was here. He wasn't too thrilled when he knew he was going to be taking over anyway. Little bit of a woman?
Yep, you hit that one on my head.
Could have made his day after here, huh?
And be careful, those women are everywhere.
So, so back to the clinic. Any objection to continuing Carrie as an alternate and with Judy as our representative?
No.
I think we need a motion for, yeah. So is there a motion to appoint Judy as our regular board member for the Regional Board of Commissioners? And Carrie Covey as our alternate commissioner? Say second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
You have to think about that.
It's controversial. I'll finish on that. Okay, any other business?
Yeah, and I'll go to the, I'm planning on going to the Transportation Council meeting Thursday night.
Okay.
And I don't know as we have an alternate on that.
I'll flip back if you don't know.
Yeah. I don't feel like the committee's kind of.
We should, we should take a look at those, probably.
Yeah, I think it might have been John Corliss, but I'm not sure.
Oh, okay.
So maybe that would be a good thing for Kyle eventually, but.
Yeah, or one of the, one of those.
One of the guys, yeah.
Looks really into this. Okay.
So if there's nothing else, we have a motion to recess the regular select board meeting and convene the Board of Water Commissioners. So.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so delinquent accounts, I'm going to have another report run the end of this week or last month to see any of those who were, you know, had, had paid or now slipped behind again. The two that we did go to shut off came in and paid their delinquency and fault. So they're current now, so. And we are doing a shut off, well, it's not, it's not because it's delinquent, but it's, someone requested us to do a shut off on Meadow Street Friday because they're having work done inside. So our guys went down there and the shut off is not in our right of way, it's on her property. Just a few inches over. But the pipe is like, if you have to dig way down to get to it, because it's something, the pipe is like shifting, you can't get to the turnoff thing. So what, she could get a plumber to do that, but it's, it's only, it's going to be a quick fix. All he's doing is putting a shut off inside the house. So they, I think, are going to shut the main off at the end of the road. So those houses won't have water, but for like an hour tops with that. And it's going to be during the morning, so. So I told him to just notify those people. I'm one of them, so.
Are we going to have to shut off or then knock it right away?
He wasn't going to now, no. No.
Yeah, main's up, seems like an ideal time to do it.
Yeah, I know. I don't know how much, they're flushing hydrants this week, so.
We don't do much digging anymore.
No, I know, I know. No, they should, they should move it, I'll mention it to Kyle.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if it's something they could do.
Would be better to have it in the right of way.
Yeah, I mean, they want to shut it down the road. They want to shut the main off again eventually.
Right.
And we can, you know, get rid of that old shut off.
Right.
Same time.
Okay.
Let's leave it there.
Yeah, or at least get the, you know, the stem out, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Anything else for Water Commissioners? So there's not, is there a motion to adjourn the Board of Water Commissioners and convene the Board of Sewer Commissioners? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Lagoon Liners.
All right, so I reached out to Aldrich and Elliot and we had a long conversation about the lagoons and the liners. And he said basically that the lagoons, the liners right now aren't a threat. Like, you know, we, we don't have to worry about them, you know, failing and stuff like that. But it definitely is something two to five years down the road, we have to. So what he's doing is, in the process right now, we have to do a design, he has to do a design inspection first. And that, he said, can take a whole year to do. So once we get them on board with that and they start that, and that's done, we're going to have to really start looking at, what do we do? And the only reason he's held off on that right now is because of the sludge. He's kind of waited to hear about sludge removal and who's going to do it. And things are kind of ramping up there again. I think Canada's going to open up again, so sludge can be brought up there. There was a town, Hardwick, I think he said, that had to do sludge and they brought theirs to New York, which he said was a kind of a mess, I think. But he said there's just not a lot of places to get rid of it, yeah. So he said also the second thing is the UV system is reaching its life's end. But he said right now there's no permit compliance issues. And he gave me some different programs that we can look at for financing to help us with that whole project. You know, obviously we had to go for a bond if it's really big. But he said the pricing really hasn't changed much for the liners themselves. He said all of that has pretty much stayed the same. He said he's just curious what the sludge is going to be and how costly that was. So, but it's, it's becoming more accessible than it was like a year ago.
That's good to know. We had talked about spending some ARPA funds on that, can we sit on the ARPA funds that long, you know, three to four years?
I, I think you can, as long as you have a project in place. I think they don't have to be spent till twenty twenty-six. And he said that this should be, like, looking at this, I think, was starting, he thought, twenty twenty-five, that we should start working on this. Yeah, because that would be a big help and then you don't have to, you know, go looking for tax.
Well, we'll probably still need some kind of a bond.
Right, but not less, yeah.
Super. Okay, anything else for Lagoon Liners? If not, we'll move on to inspection report.
All right, so we did, they did inspection report and this was, I'm trying to figure out. So this was when they came last time and they did inspection on the, the plant. And so they had all these criteria, so I read it out to Kyle. Because what they did is, I, I found this actually and printed it out, because I was like, okay, we need these corrective actions. So there's certain things that we are required to do and then certain things that are recommended to do. So one of the biggest things, and again, it's the plan from Aldrich and Elliot, which they'll be coming. And he even said to me today that he owes it to us. So he said he'll be getting that to me. But the emergency action plans, one of the other things was hire or designate a chief operator by twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. So that's something that is required. So Kyle and I have been talking about, you know, the Public Works Group and who might be best and where the interest is and stuff. So we're going to try to narrow that down and talk with the guys and stuff and figure that out. Because they're both, you know, getting pretty good, you know, down there at the plant and stuff. And they're, they're both kind of like, I mean, they're both here at the same time, so it's just kind of feeling them out. And then a couple of things that were recommended to do that I've talked to Kyle about too. So we'll try to get all of those things done back to them, just so that we can report that these things have. And we, the deadline was October, that we had to get these in.
Okay. Any questions about the inspection report? It doesn't look like anything huge. No.
No.
Most of it's already started. Okay, any other business for sewer commissioners? If there is none, can I have a motion to adjourn the Board of Sewer Commissioners and re-convene the regular select board meeting?
A move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Sheriff's report, everybody get a chance to take a look? Yeah, everyone wants a special report.
Yeah.
What did you say?
Only two pages rather than.
Yeah, they did, that's, I ran it through this week and they didn't have it in the system yet.
Oh.
Yeah.
A little different.
Because I printed it and then it's like, wait a minute, that's not what I planned to. So I looked and I don't think they had uploaded it.
No warnings, no fines.
I know there's, wasn't there fines, but no?
No, it's, it always screws me up. So it's tickets issued zero, warnings issued four.
Okay.
Fines issued zero. I, I, every time I look at it, I screw that up. Public Works Forum report.
So they're flushing hydrants this week. They've been doing, they've been putting up new signs that they've received, putting those into place.
Set by the funds.
And I've got them, this coming week, getting the park ready for Fall Festival, so. That, they brought on all the dumpsters over there.
Well, it looks good.
Does look good. You know, stormwater meeting is at the library at six o'clock. Thursday.
Thursday.
Okay.
This Thursday?
Yes.
Six?
Six to seven.
Town manager report?
All right, I'll try to be quick. So under the assessor, the appeal that was filed with the Supreme Court disputing property tax assessment has been dismissed by the Supreme Court.
Yes, that is excellent.
Water, again, I mentioned the two shut offs that will pay in full of the delinquent parts of pieces. Water Asset Management Plan and Workshop, Public Works attended a one-day workshop. This past week, not this week, about previous week, three of them went. And then they'll go again in October and then again in November. And part of that is for our asset management plan that they're actually being trained and stuff. So it's a good thing that they're going. Dump Day I already talked about. Let's see, a lot of this stuff we've talked about because I've sent out a few bids, got those. I met with the two sixth grade classes regarding the Energy Committee for the Planning Commission for the Fall Festival. And they are designing a banner for the table. And I saw a lot of emails go back and forth looking for a table today. And I said, don't worry, the school's actually giving us their table. So they didn't know what size to use, so then they said, hub up that table, we'll use that one, we'll just give you that table, we'll use that day. So the kids are all excited about it. I brought them each a beaver. I made their day. They're easier to please than some others, I guess, so it's like. So I'm going to get that Friday or have the guys go pick it up Friday, they should have it ready. Let's see. Attended workshops remotely, so Vermont Emergency Preparedness Conference, I did the twentieth and twenty-first remotely. Attended different ones, going over a lot of blood information, Red Cross, different things. But some of it was educational for like future concerns, you know, like kind of contacts. And I, I think they're trying to make ways to find better communication when things like this happen. How do we get the word out? How do we get share and stuff? We received approval, so I filed the application for the energy assessment and we received notification that it was approved. So they said they're kind of behind, but they'll get information to us. And at this time, we might just be able to do one building rather than another. So if they do, I think I'd rather focus on this building and then the garage maybe, unless you guys feel differently.
Makes sense.
And then Emergency Relief Assistance Fund was to inform us that FEMA report reimburses seventy-five percent of public repair costs. And the state matches seven point five, although depending on steps a town's taken, they can raise the match up to twelve point five or seventeen. We were awarded a match of seventeen, so that's a really good thing, that's really positive. Looking at securing a new forester for the Chittenden Timberlot. I've reached out to the state to discuss this, so he sent me a list. I've reached out to the state to discuss this, so he sent me a list of names because some people are retiring and the list isn't getting much longer, so.
Well, what Chittenden's as a retired, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
I expected that.
They've done a good job.
Yes.
Once we do that and kind of reevaluate who we'd like to go, then we can kind of reexamine the need of the timber up there in that road and whether or not it's actually necessary, so. September meeting's coming up. I will be at town fair for Vermont Leasing Cities and Towns tomorrow, Wednesday. There's a Rutland Regional Planning Commission Emergency Management Meeting, the twenty-eighth. And then the community, or no, sorry, twenty-seventh, overlapping, just like the Sheriff's Report. The twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth will be the community meeting for Stormwater Master Plan. That's it.
What was this?
Oh, I added that because I was, sorry. So the only, we went and looked for sand. And we used Hunter Excavating last year, so we reached out to them again this year because the guys said that they were great. Because we, they know exactly where to go to get the sand. They can get it when they need it. They don't have to get bulk and keep it. So we, I reached out to them, so it's thirteen dollars a ton this year, so. So they'd like to be able to get sand from that.
If it works for the crew, that's important of it.
Right, right. And he didn't even think what we've got out for in the past, that we need half of that probably this year because we still have some. And once we got the fuel, decided they've got to contact them right off because they got to top off the generators, I think, so. We got to get that done.
Any other questions for the Town Manager's Report? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Can we do that? Should we have a quick executive session about this water issue?
I don't know that we can if it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, because we didn't warn it, yeah.
So we have to have a special meeting.
All right, no, I would think you can wait for two weeks.
Or you could have a special meeting between.
Yeah, that's all right with everybody. I think we shall be on the same page.
Yeah.
So do we want to look at a time to set a special meeting to go into executive session to discuss that?
You could meet at four o'clock if you wanted the library. We close at four, so that one was available.
Before the stormwater meeting?
Or the meeting's at six. Oh, maybe five. I was thinking.
You bringing supper?
There might be coffee.
That'd be enough time to warn it, because today's Monday.
Yeah, I'm going to be here next two days.
Yeah, you could warn it, that's part of the time.
Tuesday, Wednesday, but you're here Thursday, right?
Right, but I got to warn it like today.
Oh, you have to warn it.
Oh, no, I can warn it the day before.
Yeah, twenty-four hours.
But I'll be here.
You can, yeah, but you can post the agenda to the website, send it to me to post at the library and so you can post downstairs, okay? I can post it at the post office. I'm not trying to force you, I'm just the option. I'm trying to...
I hope that he understood where I was trying to come from when I, I mean, it was like, I've been in your shoes. I know, I know, I stand with town. And he was adamant, he's like, no, he said, there's no way. You know, and it was just like, no, that's it. You have to pay for, for ten dollars.
Yeah, so let's wait until the executive session.
Okay, okay, I'm just saying I'm...
No.
Is, is five o'clock okay for Thursday at the library for a special?
Yeah, I'll be in Rutland for the Transportation Council meetings.
Can we wait till like the following week?
Do you want to wait just a week? Do it Monday next week at, what if, what if we do it Monday next week at four? I mean, it's, it's, we're just going to go into executive session, so.
I won't, I have a boil change at two in the middle.
What works for you?
How about Tuesday at four?
Tuesday at four, would that work for everybody?
Okay. Tuesday, what day?
The third, I think, October third?
I think so. Yeah. Albert, does that work for you with Linda?
Yes, she does.
Okay, time? Four o'clock here? Anything else to discuss? So if not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.